Item number seventeen, resolution by Councilmember Shushanian and Tofelsky, authorizing Corporation Council to modify the development agreement between Redco and the city to allow an additional incentive of a payment in lieu of taxes.
Council has had a lot of discussion and received a lot of information about this proposed change to the plan for senior housing at the Redco development site on the corner of Michigan and Schaefer, for those might remember as the Montgomery Ward site. We are being asked to approve a payment in lieu of taxes, which is otherwise known as a pilot, in support of the Redco developers applying for a low-income housing tax credit through MISHDA, which is the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. They're also taking on a new partner, MHT Housing, who specializes in these types of -- this type of housing, and changing some of the aspects of the original plan, including their reducing the square footage, or what others may say is number of units. And their goal is to complete the senior housing element of the project by the required MEDC Brownfield incentive deadlines of December 2018. We have had the opportunity to meet with the developers, with Redco and MHT. We've had discussion on this. We've also had discussion with -- about this at the committee of the whole. So I don't know if -- I assume there might be some questions or comments?
I guess, from my standpoint, I've been a person who's questioned this project kind of from the beginning in terms of, did it make sense, doesn't it make sense? For me, the goal of a project like this is not just what it does for the developer, but what it means to the city itself and what other projects available to go in its place if this project does not go in there. And so the question becomes one of what's best for that piece of property, excuse me, what's the best use? And remember to go back, this always was going to be senior housing. It's just changed now to senior housing based on MISHDA's outline, which deals with so much, so many dollars that you can have in terms of income to qualify for this project. These are not HUD or Medicare or Medicaid-type projects. These are lower-income projects for many people that maybe rely on Social Security or don't have high-end pensions that would look to be available. And so I looked at the -- I drove by the project Saturday. I met with the, thankfully, with the Redco people again on Monday and the MHT people. I went to the site again on Tuesday. I walked the site. I looked at the site. I thought to myself, could houses go here? And I thought, who would want to live with a house that faces a parking deck and has a side yard, has a parking structure, and the front yard is a parking deck? Then I looked at maybe multiple housing units developments, and I couldn't come up with a structural look of knowing where the city is at right now with as many townhouse types that we have that are available units, and why would this site fit more? And I just couldn't find, in my mind, a project that is going to be any better for this site than this project that's going in there for the community. I felt that at least you now have an opportunity for people, it's walkable for them to utilize some of the restaurants, maybe family to utilize some restaurants in and around the facility. And although the project has changed, and I like the scaled-down project. I like, I think it's better for the neighborhood that it went from four stories to three stories. It's less intense, and I think that actually is better for the neighborhood that exists there right now. So although I don't, I will tell you, I don't love the project, I think it's the best project for the piece of property, so.
You know, what I'd like to add is, so there was a lot of hesitation on my part, and I know from some of my colleagues, and at this point, I don't know where everyone stands, but I will add is I was leaning towards, you know, against this project previously. Learning and gaining some more knowledge and information on this has helped me view it the same way that Councilman Abasi just described. And I've had conversations with both Councilman Abraham and Abasi, who has spent a lot of time in looking into this as well. One of the things for me is driving out there, and I know Councilman Shushanian talked to me about this last week. I drove out there, and if you look at it, and if we were, if this property were to revert back to us, what would go there? So obviously, we'd be looking at maybe some homes over there. And I think, I'd like Councilman Abraham to touch on this. If we were to build some homes over there, first of all, it's, it would be homes that look straight at a parking deck, abutting a parking lot, and it just, it's not, I don't know how much value we would get out of that, or anyone that was looking to build any homes, what the value that would be coming out of that. I think that we have an opportunity right now where we have incentives, or the Brownfield incentives coming in. We have MISHDA who's interested, very much interested in the project and is able to provide some money for this project. And I don't know if we will have that opportunity later on. So that's something that we should all be considering. And I'd like to defer this, Councilman Abraham. I'm going to throw it to you, put you on the spot.
Thank you.
Only because I think some of the points that you had to share with me really surmise, or at least address some of the concerns that we've all had.
Well, I too, I too struggled with this project and what it means to the community. And I was here when Redco first made the proposal to the city council back in '07, I believe, and signed the developers' agreement, I believe, in '08, maybe '09. And so it's been a long time coming to complete this project, and I commend the entire group there for staying with this project through some difficult times when other developers may have picked up and ran in the other direction. This project always, as was stated, had this parcel of land earmarked for senior living. And I think that's important. In today's world, you know, we talk about diversity, we're talking about travel bans, we're talking about who's welcome in our community. I think it's important that we recognize our seniors and the ability for them to have choices in how they want to live in Dearborn. And the city of Dearborn has done, I think, a remarkable job creating senior housing in our community. At this point, I think for the first time in a long time, we have a private developer that is invested in a project to bring really comfortable senior residential units, independent units, to Dearborn. And they've done so using tools that are available to them, that are endorsed by the state of Michigan. And I think the state has participated in this project to this point by essentially being an equity partner to subsidize 16-plus million dollars of construction costs, a portion of 16 million dollars of construction costs, to make this project viable in our hometown. And whether we can look past the title of low income, low-income housing taxes or not, that's a decision we all have to make up here. I look at it as a creative way to finance a project to get senior housing in our community that's affordable to everyone. Not everyone will qualify, but at least it gives the city of Dearborn and its residents and non-residents the ability to come here and live here in an affordable, safe environment. To segue then into what Council President was asking about taxes, part of the low-income housing tax credit requires participation with the local community. Prior to MISHDA's involvement, all of the tax spinoff from this parcel of land would have gone to the Brownfield to essentially pay off the bonds for the parking deck that support the entire development. And if I'm misstating, somebody out there can correct me later. What MISHDA has come forward and said with their guideline is, that's not good enough. We want payments directly to the city of Dearborn, directly to this community, to support the entire community's general fund and what we have to offer to all of our residents. And the estimated calculation is about $53,000 a year with a total stream of payments of about 1.6 million. And I think that essentially would match, if not far exceed, any other type of development that could go in this parcel. It's not that big of a piece of property, and it's not in that great of a position. I don't even believe it has a public road access that I'm aware of. So if we built homes, or we built a strip mall, or we built something else back there, that tax capture would go to pay off the debt. In this unique financing mechanism, the taxpayers of Dearborn would have a unique benefit of senior housing that's affordable, as well as $53,000 plus per year in pilot money, payment in lieu of taxes, that would go to our general fund. And although I wasn't exactly supportive of this entire senior development, mainly because of the contractual commitments that were originally made by Redco when we signed the development agreement, as I learned later doing some more detailed research, essentially, as Councilman Abasi stated, the two major components, from a development perspective, are scaling the construction back from four stories to three, and from 110,000 square feet to approximately 90,000 square feet. And then the third component is how it's financed, and I already covered that. So in my mind, they've gotten creative with financing, taking advantage of what's available and endorsed by the state of Michigan, are living up to the requirements, using the low-income housing tatics to create a pilot of $53,000 a year to the city, and at the same time meet, I think, our core mission, which is to create comfortable living in our community that's safe. So I hope that more than answers what you were asking of me that we talked about earlier.
Thank you, Councilman Abraham. Councilman O'Donnell?
Just to give a little different perspective, you know, we talked about the Veterans Plaza next to this building, and we discussed having a piece of land is very valuable because we don't know what the future holds or what could potentially happen there. So I don't, I do agree that some of the points we made about right now, maybe it's the best project, but trying to create a little bit more of a long-term vision kind of made me look critical at this. There are a lot of good things at this project, but in my line of work, it's really up to me to kind of forecast the future, the best of my ability. And in that process, I do something called the base case, and the best case, and then probably like the most realistic case. And for me, I feel like a lot of the assumptions that are being discussed are the very, very best-case scenario. And I think that history has shown us, it's very, few times you go to the plate and hit a home run. Lots of singles, doubles, a couple of strikeouts, but those home runs are kind of hard to come by. And I just think when I put all of the facts together in earnest, of course I want our seniors to have comfortable living. Of course I love to have options. I just can't help but feel, for me personally, that we are, this project is kind of being shoehorned in. A lot of facts are changing, the last week or two beforehand with respect to the financing, eligibility, et cetera. And after having years, and now that the tax credit clock is clicking, we're kind of scrambling, and my comfort level is one that is just not there. So I'm not supportive. If it does pass, which I think it will tonight, I hope nothing but the best. However, in my good conscience, I just can't bring myself to support a project that I don't fully believe is the best interest in that property at this time.
Mr. President?
Yes.
My opinion on this project, I agree with Councilman O'Donnell as far as the magnitude that this was brought forward in the, in the short time. I appreciate all the emails and the calls, and I understand that view and your point. But when I'm looking at a project, I don't look at, well, if it wasn't this, what would be better? I agree that this type of housing would work there, but saying that, we also have Hubbard Manor East, less than a mile away, that's 53 percent occupancy in the same demographics. So to look at this and say, this is not a material change, I disagree absolutely with it because of the fact you're, they're here today because it is a material change. If it wasn't, we wouldn't have to vote on it. Originally, it was supposed to have $3,000 a month worth of rent for these places we're going to be. It was going to be four stories, a different developer, so you have three significant changes. To me, I look at that as a material enough change that requires us to do our due diligence and have it bid out. Because Redco has only a year or so left on their tax credit, that's not what's in the best interest of the city of Dearborn. The best interest for the taxpayers is to put this back out for a bid, which personally, I don't even know how this much of a change can be done without us as a properly putting this back out as land and through our procurement ordinance, allow it to be rebid. And if Redco has the best project, that would be great. But to say their tax credits are going to run short here by 2018, when they had nine years to come up with a project, and to say that, well, that's okay. All the people that bid nine years ago, that did not get the opportunity to have a low-income housing, now that we could just say, well, since it's, you were the bidder, we'll just have you change it completely to the way you want it, I think is absolutely not in the best interest of the city of Dearborn and should be bid out, rebid out, to get the best project for our residents. And that's where I stand on it.
Yeah, Council President, if I could have the floor?
Yes.
So Beck, and I was also on the council when this happened, back in 2008. You know, it was the old Montgomery Ward property. The city did purchase it for around three and a half million, 3.35 million, and then we bid it out. Originally, the project was 50-50 Schaefer Midwest Health Clinic was moving down. That was going to be the anchor along with Oakwood. We were promised 850 jobs in addition to what was there. We built, the city of Dearborn, the taxpayers built the parking structure that supports that. And the question is, with regard to the property we're talking about now, is the density, the housing. I do not believe residential housing would work there. You can't put a residential house that looks at a parking structure, or looks at a wall. I don't think that's fair, and I don't think people would buy it. So it has to be something with density, some type of housing. The issue here is now they're coming to us, they could build it, but they need to make sure that it's feasible, or it's financially in the best interests of the Redco Corporation to build it. So that's why they need to come to us to get the pilot program. So it does qualify for the low-income tax credit housing status, and that's exactly why they're here. Well, once they qualify for that low-income tax credit housing on that corner, which is the Montgomery Ward's corner, you have the other corner on the other side, which is the art space, that also qualifies. So now that whole quadrant of the city has low-income tax housing, and I do think that what we're doing here is enriching the developers, in my opinion, because they could build. And Councilman Abraham's right with his, with his tax credit structure. Roughly $53,040 go to the city and city only, so it's about 1.6 million dollars with the subsidized housing. However, if they were to build it with market value and market value rates and that, the city of Dearborn would actually end up getting about $70,000 a year, 2.1 over the term. Now, again, the reason they're not is because it's not economically feasible from profitability standpoint. But it's an issue of whether or not I think this area needs, again, low-income housing. I'm not so, not so much have an issue with the density, because I do believe it's a downtown. We want to have a dense and active, vibrant center. But too often, the city of Dearborn is, made promises by developers. Oh, you're going to have, you know, 800 jobs up front, and we're going to do this, and you're going to put a parking structure, and we're going to do this. And too often, the city of Dearborn is, it falls short on the development side of what actually happens. And this is just another one of those cases. Besides this parcel of land on that, on that property, they also own a commercial, an area that they have to develop as commercial strip off of Schaefer Road. And I've already heard conversations through, I believe it was the EDDA, that they are looking at putting, changing that commercial to more of a mixed-use development, more of housing. So I don't know if that's going to come to fruition, if they're going to come back for another change, because there's been four change orders on this. But this project, again, I think we're trying to finish, fish it in there and run it in there last minute so that they can get all the credits they need. It's going to pass here tonight, so that corner is going to have--
There's no guarantee. We don't know what the votes are.
You're right. You're right. I'm sorry, Council President, I got the floor, though, if I can--
Well, I'm just saying that there's no guarantee it's going to pass. I mean, we don't know the four votes yet.
Well, I do have--
I'm sorry, I still have the floor. In my opinion, I believe it's going to pass here because Redco did a phenomenal job, the ownership of that did a phenomenal job of lobbying the council and giving them information on all that. And I, hats off to you, because that, that was completely different the other night. But my, my, my point to that is, is once again, the city of Dearborn, you guys are going to enrich yourself with the low-income tax credits. It's going to work. And again, I agree with my council colleagues. If it does go through, I hope it's a beautiful project, and it's what we need. But I think what Councilman Serini said, and I've made that point and think others did, is we're kind of competing with our own senior housing--
We are.
--in a sense. This is going to be big, nice, and beautiful, but, and so you're going to get those people. It's just, it's, do we need this type of low-income tax credit housing on this corner in what was supposed to be a very, very dynamic development that is not even close? Because we're one-third of the way there, this would make it two-thirds, and we still have the parking deck we got to pay for. So that's, again, I was there for it. I just think, I didn't support it then, and I wouldn't support it now based on this.
Barry, I have a few questions, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I have one, actually.
If this weren't passed today, what would happen?
Well, the requirement for the application to MISHDA has to go in by April 1st. So if it were not passed today, it would have to be somehow brought forward in some other form.
When you mean brought forward in some other form, like meaning it might be, come back at another meeting, some negotiations, discussions, changes?
Well, I think probably from a timing point of view, the main issue is they need two readings on the pilot ordinance, and there's only two more meetings after this one before--
Unless we have a special meeting.
Unless you had a special meeting, right, so.
And if we ultimately don't agree to this, you know, and like I said, I've been on the fence since Thursday, or since the first time we met, and then talking about it on Thursday, I'm just trying to weigh out whether or not decision on my part, if I want to, if I'm 100 percent comfortable to say yes today, or if I want, if I want to look into a few more things. So if we don't go forward with this, what happens with respect to the land? What is their requirement, or the contract require them to do and by what date?
Well, the contract requires them to build all aspects of the project by December of 2018, so--
And if not?
Well, then the, the project would essentially default on the, the tax credit, and the property comes back to the city, and the tax credit is up to the state. There's no aspect of the tax credit that comes to the city. If the, if the state chooses to claw back the tax credit, then that would have to be repaid to the state by Redco.
Not the city, not the taxpayers.
I got another question, Adam. I got another question.
Right, correct? Did you say Redco? Who would have--
Redco has to pay.
That's the Redco agreement with the state, yes.
Another question, because I wasn't here nine years ago when they did this, but this council has consistently said, when you, when we bid out a project and we expect it to be fulfilled that way. So I still am concerned on how we take a project that was projected to do one thing and now change it totally materially and not rebid it. I don't know if Mrs. Wallen can speak on that, if that's something that we even legally can do as a procurement ordinance regarding this property. And I know the council can vote on how they feel, but this is land, this charter speaks on this and says that it needs to be properly betted out.
Actually, the procurement ordinance requires us to bid out property. In this case, there is also a provision in the procurement ordinance that allows the council to waive those requirements. So that's why it's being put before you to see if the majority of the council wants to modify the development agreement or not and bid it out. But the council does have the prerogative to go either way.
Another question I have, in the front part, and maybe Councilman Tofelsky can talk about this, because I wasn't here nine years ago, but the front part on Schaefer, that was supposed to be commercial?
Yeah, I'd very defer, I just, from what my recollection is--
Is that right?
The, you're talking about the other building that hasn't been built yet?
Yeah.
The vacant lot.
It was supposed to be retail on the first floor, and then I think the view was offices above, which would have been generally scheduled for medical offices to support the medical center.
And they're not doing that either?
Well, they've been testing the market on that. I think we've, we've only had some discussions about whether or not there might be another option of perhaps some for-sale housing there. That's not something that Redco has brought forward--
But that's another, that's another--
That's not something they've asked for at this point.
Well, when do they have to do that? Because we don't want to get that a month before they have to do it.
Same timeframe.
So by 2018?
By the end of 2018.
They have to complete it by 2018, but yet they haven't brought that forward yet.
Well, hold on, Barry.
No, but that's, that's a relatively small building.
So you're saying they haven't made that request, but there's discussions on that?
The only discussions were that because they have said several times during the market evaluation of that particular building, that there hasn't been the market to justify building it, that perhaps we need to look at some other options. That's, they're looking at other options. We said maybe something more like the townhouses or something of that nature would be appropriate. That would be for-sale housing, so that's not a Lytec project or any of these other kinds of projects.
See, I, and that gives me hesitation, because now--
It's not commercial, it wasn't what was--
Now it's changing it.
Well, they haven't said that they're not going to build the commercial--
Barry, they only have a year, right?
No, they have 10 months plus a year.
Okay. I want to ask another question. $16 million is what they're, they're putting into the, I mean, is what the cost is, right?
Correct.
How much is coming in from the subsidization?
The, I think it's about 11 million through the tax credit.
And then what else, again?
About 12 million through the tax credit.
Okay, 12 million.
There's a couple of million from the other tax, the tax credit that is on the project, which is a total of 9.6 million.
From the Brownfield?
Because what I'm coming up with--
And the rest is a mortgage, I think, for a million and a half.
So they're, so they're getting a $60 million, $60 million project for a million and a half?
Well, assuming--
I don't know, is it yes or no?
Assuming they get that support.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it essentially reduces the long-term mortgage on the project through the tax credit.
I understand. To me, it sounds like it's what's in best interest for them and not what's in the best interest for the city. And I don't look at it and say, well, what else is going to go there? It probably will be another senior housing would probably be great there, but maybe it just won't be them.
Well, I think--
Can I make a comment, Council President?
Yeah, one second, Council, just one second. How much money is coming out of their pocket, then, to build this?
Well, they're, they're going to get a million and a half-dollar mortgage, and the rest of it is the tax credit primarily, and then the tax credit that came from the state originally.
All right. Councilman Abasi?
I think I have the unique perspective of actually building businesses and building buildings and putting money into businesses and putting my name on the line in a couple. And so I don't, I never begrudge a investor for looking at a project that, before they get into it, they know they're going to lose a lot of money. I don't think there's anybody sitting on here that would give me $100,000, knowing that I'll probably give them $10,000 back. And if you would, please see me after the meeting. All right? Because I'm very interested in all of you that would do that. The reality is, is that economics, economics changed, all right? And we had the biggest downturn maybe in our history besides the Great Depression that occurred. And nothing, as I've said from the beginning, I would, nothing would make me happier than them building the project without tax credits and having three and four and $5,000 senior housing units like they do at the others. However, we have two of those facilities in the city already. All right? I don't like to give anyone any plaudits, but we know those two facilities that exist that are at those levels. And one of those had to completely change their marketing structure of how they did business because they were running into the same problems of finding people that could afford after the last structural change and after the last downturn. And again, it isn't, when someone says, well, it's not about what goes there, well, sure it's about what goes there. What other opportunities are there? You know, I've lived here my whole life, and I've watched West Dearborn go through a decimation due to bad decisions, due to bad developers, due to bad businesses that were behaving in there, and due to a variety of other issues that left the city lurching for something to go in there. And then the round-robin of bad businesses going in, moving in, moving out, and cannibalization from one business to another. To some extent, I'm not their advocate, and I don't appreciate the word of being lobbied because I haven't been lobbied in my entire life. Stop, stop.
Well, with, okay, Councilman Abasi, we all got an email. We all got the same email from our office. I didn't say who was lobbied, I said our office got an email--
I appreciate that.
--and forwarded to seven council members from the president of Redco--
With his cell phone number.
--that said, here's his cell phone number.
Here's his cell phone number.
Call me anytime.
What do you call that?
That's lobbying.
That's called, that's called, and I did not call him. I went and got information.
I'm just talking--
I met with him for further information to find out the difference between low-income housing, HUD housing, Medicare housing, so that I would get a better understanding of the project, all right? Because to make an informed decision, the requirement is on us to gather as much information as possible. You can only make the best information when you have the best information available. Otherwise, you make bad decisions based on partial information, which is politicians are notorious for, all right? So I don't, as I said, I don't love this project. I'm not gonna sit up here and advocate for the project. What I'm going to say is, if the project doesn't go through, the kids in that area are gonna be able to play soccer for a long time, all right? That's what you're gonna have, all right? Because we got a lot of those fields already in the city, all right? Go by Porath. There's a whole bunch of soccer areas. If you cut the grass, they can play soccer over there. We have a piece of property that the city bought here in 2001 next to the library that we use. It's the most expensive soccer field in the community.
Supposed to be early.
All right, so the, the reality is, is that I don't know if we need another small soccer field. If we do, let's just put a couple of nuts up there and call it what it is, all right, and move on. Because the, the factor is, is that this question is about the type of senior housing. That's what this question really is about. The scaled-down version is better for the community, in my personal opinion. So this is about the type of senior housing. Is, is Dearborn, and I agree with you wholeheartedly, Hubbard East is half-full. But we, we haven't put money in Hubbard East probably since I was 12, and I'm gonna be 59.
Two different types.
All right, and they're different, they are different types. But I mean, honestly, if we had to put the money into Hubbard East probably from 12 to 59, this might not even have a discussion going on.
You're right.
But, but we haven't. And by the way, I'm not sure we belong in the senior housing business as a government. As a business person, I'm not sure it belongs as an independent agency who can do a better job at it than we do, and we just wing it a little bit at the end and say, okay, oh, man, that's really getting bad. Let's throw some money at it and see how that works out. So the, the question with this is, clearly, all right, does this 77-unit scaled-down structure, low-income housing unit now fit the best interests of the city going forward? We don't get to go back nine years and rehash stuff. We don't even get to go back to yesterday, all right? We get to decide what's best interest of the taxpayers of the community based on the information that we have available in front of us today. And so if we decide no, and we can make that decision, then understand that economically, if they could have built the units and, and sold them at 3,000, they would have rather done that, because it's more income stream for them. It's a greater income stream to be independent, not have the MISHDA, Mr. Project in there. It's a better income stream.
But that's what-
What about the commercial, what about the commercial retail spot?
But economically, that's what we're talking about. For them to build it, they need the tax credits.
Wait, the commercial, hold on.
I, I agree with you. You're right.
Let me finish, cuz he asked me a question. The, the commercial retail, commercial retail's dead, all right? So it, it, Amazon's gonna drop stuff at your door in, in, in half a day, and you're gonna, you see this right here? You know what? Video killed the radio star. This killed retail, all right, in terms of the box stores. So it, that's just the way it is. So I, I, you know what? I don't want, I'm gonna be, at, at the risk of someone, making someone mad, I don't want it to turn into Three Hookah Shops, okay? That I don't want, all right? So I'd rather have grass trees in a small park than a retail store that's vacant or turning people over, moving from hookah to tobacco sale to hookah. That's my personal opinion.
Okay, can I go back nine years?
Yes, you can.
Yes.
You were here.
In nine years, when we bid the project out, how many did we have that bid for that project?
I think two, maybe?
I know there was at least one other bid. It was Burton Katzman, though.
Oh, boy.
Okay?
That was a lot.
Nine years ago-
They were the best thing, they were the best thing around, cuz they were-
And nine years-
In Chillicothe, weren't they?
And nine years ago, the whole plot was bid out. Not some plot in the middle of a neighborhood, or basically off the strip, facing a parking structure. So I don't know who is gonna go in there for a 16 million dollar project right now and said they're gonna build something.
And Councilman, you're 100% correct. Nine years ago, we bid out the entire parcel. My whole point is, nine years ago, there was a lot of things that were promised. I get the scales of economy change. I get that. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not dumb, okay? I own businesses. I run real estate. I do all kinds of things too, so I get that. You know, I got a degree from the University of Michigan Ann Arbor. I'm a pretty smart guy. I don't pontificate on that, but I understand all that. My whole point is, is this project, is this project the right project with subsidized housing? You're right. If it comes back to us, it may sit, it may be a parking lot, it may be nothing. You're right. But it also could be something else with the revitalization of what's going on, and you don't know that. We don't know that. And, and my prerogative is to say, look, if they wanna put more money from their corporate checkbook into the project to make it work, they can do that. Right now, they're asking us for a favor to give, to, to approve this pilot program. My, my, my vote is no. I think, and, and that's my prerogative. You wanna approve it, that's fine.
That's fine.
I just don't think it's the right thing. We have subsidized housing on the other corner in the old art space, in the old city hall.
And how's that? And how's that going?
I don't know. Ask Harry Lyle. No one's coming across. You know, there's no economic stimulus.
Barry, how is the art space doing right now? The, um, the residential quarters of the art space?
It's, it's doing great. I mean, it's, it's all leased up. They're working, they're working on the commercial part right now, and they're expecting to have that open about the middle of this year.
But that's a whole nother thing, but-
Well, it's studios, studios and galleries and some food service.
Are they all filled? The residential?
The residential part is full.
It's all full.
And that subsidized housing again, right? That was the MISHDA tax credit.
Well, again, when you, when you say subsidized housing, you're, you're correct.
Was it market value, was it, is it market value driven? Cuz we had market studies that your office provided us that showed that the market value, that building compared to the rest of the housing in the area was not at market value. It's subsidized.
Yes, it is subsidized. But the purpose of the tax credit is to build a high-quality project, and you see the level of quality that went into the city hall. They spent almost 17 million dollars rehabbing that building, and I know the mayor has said many times, we had about 8 million of deferred maintenance on that project.
And I think that's the part, so part of my hesitation was the fact that it's being subsidized and what type of housing units we'll have there. But that's, that's the part of the discussion that Councilman Abraham and I were having this afternoon, is that it's being subsidized, but it's sort of like given a, it's offering a grant, still build high-quality type housing, and to offer that to our seniors that might be interested in something like that versus maybe Hubbard Manor East. And again, I think we all agree on here that Hubbard Manor East should have been in a better position than it is today, but it is not. And so this provides an opportunity where they could have two bedrooms, one bedroom or two bedrooms. I don't know if they went up to three, but I believe it was just up to two bedrooms.
One and two.
And, you know, we've seen, um, you've given us pictures, and, and we've had the opportunity to visit buildings to see what it would look like. So it's, it's subsidized, but it's, it's 16 million dollars in a very small parcel of land that is going to offer seniors and a, a place to live that looks really good. I mean, it's not what, um, when you think subsidized, I think we all have this tainted view of that, but that's not in connection with this project.
That's true. And in fact, if I could just read to you for a minute, this is the letter from the state regarding this project. The medical office building was to be an investment of 30 million, 240,000 dollars. They spent 30 million dollars on that project. It brought 300 jobs over from the previous facility, and there were 200 more promised. I'm not sure where the 850 number came from. It was 500 in the medical office building. The market-rate project that they were previously proposing for the senior housing had a value of 13 million, 867,000 dollars. This project is 15 and a half million, almost 16 million dollars. So it's gonna be very much equivalent to the building that would have otherwise been built. Obviously, by putting the tax credit into it, it takes away the mortgage, so the rents are at a structure that people can afford. And to Councilman Bazey's point, there are people that are living on limited incomes. These are at 40 and 60% of the area average income, which means typically, people are paying 30% of their income in rent. So that's the way the structure is set up. And compared to our properties, you know, Hubbard East is 568. That's what you pay across the board. These, these rents start around 400, and they go up to about 950.
Barry, who sets the rate, I'm sorry, Councilman County, who sets the rate for Hubbard Manor East?
The council.
What was that?
The council.
Okay, so that's, means that it's in our prerogative, and we just found out, because I requested an occupancy on every building, is that, is that correct?
Yes.
We just found out that it's 53% vacant, 53% occupied, correct?
Well, it, it has been for a while, but yes.
Okay, who's the director of the housing?
Well?
Well, I, I mean, the question is, if we, if we have the ability to reduce the rents, and we know that it's half-full, we would have reduced the rents in the past so we can fill it back up. So I mean-
I don't think the problem is the rents.
Yeah, I don't think that was the problem. The issue is that we're not working hard enough to get people in there.
A combination of the, the building needs to be refreshed and needs to be marketed to a broader audience. And I think it's important to note, that will not be all Dearborn people. The broader audience would be other communities.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this item?
I have, I just wanna get clarification. If somebody from either MHT or Redico could actually delineate how the 15.5 or 16 million dollars will actually be financed, or, I don't know, Jim, if you're in the best position to... I've heard a couple of different answers. We've gone through this three times. I just wanna make sure it's clear for the public, specifically how the dollars will be financed and invested. So I know there's several different components of how the construction costs will be paid, including mortgages, tax credits, and investment. So if you could just help us identify exactly what those figures are?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam President, council members, my name's Jim Grohmer. I'm from MHT Housing. And, and to answer your question, it is financed, 13.3 million dollars from the low-income housing tax credits, which is divided up, essentially, 15 years divided by the 13 million. They, comes out to about $900,000 per year through the life of the project, which is 15 years for the compliance of the credits. That's where the 13 million dollars comes from.
That's being repaid from the rents?
It's not repaid. Those are tax credits that the government gives us through the state of Michigan, MISHDA, when we apply for the credits.
Each year, those were amortized off, then?
No, they do not. They do not. They're essentially coming from a, so in other words, we get the tax credits from the state of Michigan. So we're going to get the 13 million dollars. It's going to be stretched out over the, actually, 10 years plus five compliance. Then those tax credits are sold to banks on the open market, so the actually, banks are financing the project to be built for the city of Dearborn. And then the federal government gives a tax credit to the banks. So that's essentially how it's financed. So in other words, the property would then have a mortgage of 1.5 million dollars. So it allows you to build a 16 million dollar project, which is very nice, and make it affordable for the people that are in the income brackets within your community, which in this case was spelled out as 40% AMI or 60% AMI. So they'll pay $400 rent forward to $800 rents.
Okay. And I, thank you. And just to go back to the comments about material changes to the preferred developers agreement, which, which I have read and which I have been involved in, I, I, I'm not sure decreasing the density while maintaining the dollars of investments would constitute a material change, but we're, that's what we're here to decide on. In my view, I think it, as Councilman Bazey already said, it benefits, I believe, the community. As far as the other changes go, there were three comments that were made regarding the types of products and the levels of service, and, and actually, none of those I could find actually written in the agreement as far as dependent living, $3,000 a month rents. I know there were conversations, but at this point, all we can do is rely on the agreement that was actually signed by both parties and not memos and discussions, unfortunately.
Yeah, no, you're right. It did specify. Their memo, though, said, which, yeah.
I agree, but, but at the end of the day, if it was the other way, we would be able to enforce only the contract that was agreed upon by both parties. That's just how the law works. What was said inside discussions and other things don't matter after you have a written agreement, right or wrong. I mean, we can decide what's right and what's wrong, but the agreement itself doesn't speak to rents. It doesn't speak to financing, and it doesn't speak to the number of units. It speaks to square footage, and it speaks to four stories. And those are the two changes that are material, and the fact that MISHDA is requiring the pilot. My guess is if they didn't require it, you wouldn't be asking. So I guess we can blame the state of Michigan for that. In my mind, again, I'll just say it, part of diversity is economic conditions. Not everybody has the same economic status as everybody else. Not everybody can afford to live in full-service amenity-type senior housing. And, you know, I'm more comfortable today than I was at any point leading up to this, that this materially achieves the goals of the preferred developers agreement. The fact that we have to vote on the pilot because it's a requirement of the financing mechanism, you know, we have to do what we have to do, and that's why there's seven of us up here. And, and I guess that's all I really have to conclude with.
All right. Anything else from council? Anything, any questions or comments? Please step forward, state your name and age for the record.
Good evening, Zohair Atlha. I live in Dearborn Heights, but I have business in Dearborn, 5601 Shafer. I just have a couple of questions. If this company comes in and gets this tax credit, my understanding that the state will allow him not to pay taxes, and they give him a credit, $900,000 a year on whatever they own property or something. Now, how long they have to own this property before they can turn around and resell it if they want to?
We're gonna have someone come up here.
Court counsel.
I believe it's 15 years.
I believe it's 15. It says the, the term of the loan, which I believe is 15 years.
15 years, then they can-
15 years.
Can you come on up?
Please.
Sounds like you have different information.
The information we got said the term of the loan.
The, the term of the loan is 35 years. We guarantee the tax credits as a nonprofit developer for the 15 years for, which is the life of the tax credits. 10 plus the five compliance, but it cannot be sold during the term of the loan, which is 35 years.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
The second question, did the city do any study about the impact of this kind of project on the property value and about the environment around it or not?
Well, I think this, again, this development agreement was entered into nine years ago, and at that time, I don't know what type of study or what decisions were, or what information was considered to enter into the, into the agreement. But again, this was a development agreement that called for senior housing, as far as I understand it, for this parcel. So that decision was made nine years ago.
It was looked as a buffer between the neighborhood and the bigger project.
And it's consistent with the zoning.
Do you think that it's going to increase the property value? It's going to have any impact on the parking, on the in and out of the people around it?
I don't think it'll, I, I will say, my opinion is, I don't believe building 77 senior housing units with the amount of parking that's available on that commercial parcel and the amount of parking that will be provided for the housing will impact that neighborhood. I can, I can comfortably say that.
Yeah, it was, it was sized, and we were, it was sized for the deck and then the office. It was sized properly.
As far as property values go, it's a, it's still a 15.5 or 16 million dollar investment of three-story housing that's in a, in a, a pretty stable neighborhood, and this provides a, a shielded zoning buffer between that and the commercial district. So I can, I can feel comfortable that if it was me or my parents that lived on, is that Bingham or Calhoun there? I know I asked the same question the other day.
Calhoun. Calhoun's the, Calhoun's the road, the street behind it is Calhoun.
The street behind it's Calhoun?
No, Calhoun is in front of it, not in there.
So, so Bingham, if I was living in the houses on Bingham and my backyard was adjacent to this, I wouldn't be uncomfortable that somehow this would be a detriment. We're not, you know, we're not putting amplified sound and bright lights and, you know, barbed-wire fences. This is gonna be a very soft, comfortable living. This is going to be a very soft, comfortable living environment. I, I think we get very few police runs for seniors causing havoc in the neighborhoods. It's usually the other way around. It's usually the seniors calling, saying somebody else is being noisy in their backyard or being disruptive. So, you know, ultimately, I'm not, I'm not going to guarantee property values, obviously, but I'm, I'm not that personally concerned that somehow this development would cause the adjacent, directly adjacent property values to decrease.
Okay. I, I was hoping that you consider this property to be not just senior citizen, maybe nursing home, because I don't believe we have any nursing home in this side of town.
Well, it's interesting you brought that up because we had conversations about, the original discussions were about, I would call it, full-service health care. I don't know if that's the accurate term, but housing that seniors could live in that was less than independent, that would have full amenities of health care. And one of the things we learned through dialogue, open dialogue with the management team, was that those typical and same amenities that were originally brought up with American House-style dependent care, health care living, will be offered. They're just not mandatory that each individual resident will have to pay for them. So if you are over the age of 55 and you meet the qualifying requirements for income and you want to move in there, you do have choices. You can cook your own meals, or you could choose to pay for meals to be provided to you in your home, in the dining area. You could choose to take care of your own health activities on your own, get your own rides, or you could pay for those amenities to be brought to you, but they're not required. So to me, it's a very flexible model that allows people to have different options than just paying a very high dollar for care and maybe not being able to meet that entry point because economic conditions for many people, especially seniors, have changed since the recession. So I don't know if that answers your question, but that's, that's what I know.
I was hoping that really you guys think about it more thoroughly before you make a decision on something which you made a decision on nine years ago, because the demographic changed, everything changed in this side of town, the whole world, basically, and to rely on a study was nine years ago. I would hope.
You brought up a good point, though.
I would hope that you tabled this issue and you studied it before you make a decision on it. Thank you.
But change is, change you brought up is real, as Councilman Bazey said from the very beginning? The reality of it is, a lot, if not everything, has changed. The demographics, our community, economics, a lot has changed. And to think that a business owner could take a set of conditions that was outlined in 2007 or 2008, when the original proposal was presented, long before there was a Preferred Developers' Agreement, to think that that outline would still fit today, I'm not sure is realistic, number one. And number two, and I've said this before about West Dearborn, and I think it applies here, if this developer would have built that building and had rigid guidelines of how residents could qualify to enter that home, very similar to, as Councilman Bazey brought up again, Henry Ford Village was structured, there wouldn't be anybody there. And you'd have an empty building or mostly empty building in the same attributes that Councilman Serini's talking about Hubbard Manor East. We didn't change with the times with Hubbard Manor East, and we got what we got, 50% occupancy practically. We have to change.
I agree with you. That's why I'm saying.
And that is this council's responsibility? And we could say we didn't know, but it's our job to know.
I didn't know that only 53% is occupied while, while we have people.
That's our duty and our responsibility to know, to get information, to seek it out. And so now we have to, now that we have that information, we have the challenge of now what do we do to take corrective action? I think they're two separate issues. In my mind, I believe this development gives us the opportunity to take a fresh look at Hubbard Manor property. And maybe the right answer is to decommission that building, turn it into single-family residential that fits more consistence, consistently and compatibly with the neighborhood? And maybe this project gives us that opportunity there. Maybe it doesn't.
I just hope we're not going to have the same thing as Hubbard.
I agree.
And we end up with another building with half-empty.
I agree.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please step forward, state your name and age for the record. You got a question?
No. I'm talked out.
Mike Cash, I'm 730 Fort Kendall. I just want to say something that I heard earlier about the kids of the city, for it being, you know, a field that's going to be used for soccer. I have a lot of respect for the kids of the city, and we are the future. I'd rather see this field being green and with two soccer nets instead of a big building going up there. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. If not, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilman O'Donnell.
No.
Councilman Serini.
No.
Councilman Tofelzki.
No.
Council President Tabaja.
Yes.
Councilman Shushanian.
Yes.
Councilman Abraham.
Yes.
Councilman Bazey.
Yes.
Four yeses, the resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number 18, ordinance number 17-1571, in need of introduction.
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Shushanian.
Synopsis and ordinance to amend Article 3 of the Occupancy and Building Standards Chapter of the Code of the City of Dearborn by adding Division 5 entitled Dearborn Town Center Housing.
All right. There's an offer made by Councilman Bazey. Is there support?
I'll support.
Supported by Councilman Abraham. Again, this will amend the city code to provide for a service charge in lieu of taxes for